Good afternoon. Welcome to the Johnson County Public Policy Forum for the Overland Park City Council Ward 1. I'm Reagan Cusmanio. I'm the co-chair of the Overland Park Chamber's Public Policy and Advocacy Committee. For the next 60 minutes, we will have the opportunity to hear from the candidates from Ward 1 about the issues that are important to business, to the business community and the community at large. To start, let me introduce the candidates. First, we have Logan Healy and Ryan Spencer. Our format will be as follows. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement. They will then have two minutes to respond to each question prepared by the policy council, and then will conclude with a two-minute closing statement. Prior to starting the event, we have drawn names, and we will start with Mr. Healy with his two-minute opening argument, no, opening statement, not argument.
Well, thank you all very much for watching, and many thanks to the Overland Park Chamber of Commerce for hosting us today and putting this forum on and all the forums that you've been putting on to prepare people for the upcoming election. My name is Logan Healy, and I am a longtime, lifelong Ward 1 resident. I grew up here. I went to school here. Parents still live in northern Overland Park. My brother, sister-in-law, and niece also live in Ward 1 of Overland Park. So I care about our community, and I want to see us continue to have success and continue to be a place where people want to live and want to move to. Over the first four years of my service on the council, we've had a lot of work in a lot of different areas. Most recently, I helped to spearhead the initiation of an infrastructure advisory group that will build community or will build community support and also engage the community to seek solutions, long-term solutions, for our infrastructure. Street maintenance and green infrastructure and traffic continue to be high priorities for our residents, and I think that's something that we are, need to make sure that we're planning towards the future for. But we have a great community. When I go door-to-door, and we've knocked thousands of doors, everybody loves Overland Park. And what I tell them is that we have a great community. I agree. That's why I live here. That's why I love being here. But we can't rest on our laurels. We need to keep improving, keep making progress, and I feel like what I've done over my first four years is to help continue making progress, but we certainly have more work to do, and I look forward to talking about that as we answer questions throughout the rest of the forum. Thank you.
Thank you, Logan. Mr. Spencer?
Thank you. Yes, my name is Ryan Spencer. I live in downtown Overland Park, just east of the little area right there off Metcalf and Adio Street. I live there with my wife and my two children, so I'm just a husband and father as well, working full-time here at an internet security firm down here in southern Overland Park. And I'm really getting involved with local elections and local politics, and wanted to make sure that we're doing as much as we can to listen to the needs of the residents in our ward and the city overall. The biggest four-part form things that I'm dealing with are, number one, of course, safety, and that's what scores high on every single measure and metric that we can get from the city, making sure that we're continually funding our police, fire, and first aid, and making sure that they have agreed to all that they need possible and within the constraints of our current budget whenever possible as well. Number two, of course, is community response transparency. That involves making sure that my presence on the city council is a complete representation and reflection of what every single resident that I'm hearing at Ward 1 wants me to do, and making sure that the council is transparent, not just in their business development situations, but also their financial situation developments as well. Number three, of course, is school support. I want to make sure that we're working with our local school boards and providing the best education that we possibly can for all of our residents and their families. That's, of course, another top priority that comes up on every single survey as well. And then number four, as everyone always knows, is business development, and that's making sure that we're encouraging not only local and small businesses and medium-sized businesses here in Overland Park to grow and build, but making sure that they have the space. We have, unfortunately, a lot of new space, both office and retail, thanks to COVID, and there's no reason that we shouldn't be able to redevelop whenever possible, and I'm happy to make sure that those priorities are taking place over large national or international companies coming in to make Overland Park first. So I thank you very much and look forward to this.
Thank you. We'll start with question number one, and Ryan, that will start with you. A recent poll released by the Kansas City Area Home Builders and the Overland Park Chamber Foundation found that 75% of the respondents believe the city is going in the right direction. What is your reaction to this? Do you agree or disagree?
I think the city is going in the right direction. I would, of course, definitely agree with that, and I think a lot of people obviously would. I think that the issue with it going in the right direction is that it's going in the right direction despite our city council, not necessarily because of the city council. The residents are the ones that are doing all the work in our city, not the city council, and I think it's due to their efforts and their work that the city is the way it is. The neighborhood indicators, as far as Overland Park is concerned, are great, and not to switch surveys, but looking into a different survey, Ward 1 has the highest single-family home absentee owner rate, which means we have the highest number of homes being owned by somebody else being rented out. We have the highest overall crime rates for both single-family and multifamily housing. We have the highest overall property maintenance violations, which is half of the total 10 top neighborhoods, highest overall percentage of the need for free and reduced lunch, and the lowest moderate income per levels, levels per the census. So I think that there's a lot of work that needs to be done, especially in Ward 1, because if you're looking at those stats, that doesn't sound like a city you want to live in, but I know Overland Park overall is a great city, and we all can agree with that. We can do what we can to keep the lights on. Overland Parks doing what they can. They're maintaining parks. They're paying first responders as long as they don't ask for hazard pay during a pandemic. But these issues of development, keeping the original suburban feel of Overland Park, and the general effectiveness and necessary of tax increases, the quality of roads, the responsiveness of government is all what I'm hearing that we need to be dealing with on a citywide basis. So we all are happy to be in Overland Park, but that doesn't mean there aren't definitive issues that need to be addressed.
Thank you. Same question for you, Logan.
Yeah, thank you for the question. Yeah, that survey is very enlightening. I absolutely think that our city is headed in the right direction, and we did not get there by accident. You know, it is a community effort, sustained community effort over decades that is not just about city government, but it's about our business community. It's about residents. It's about our schools. It's about all the different social services that we have available in our county and our city, coming together to form partnerships. And I think that's what's great about local government, is that partisanship so far has not hit us like it has in Topeka and DC, and as long as we can keep politics out of City Hall, the better, because I think when you're able to cooperate with people, bring people together to solve problems rather than just sort of complain at each other, then I think you're going to build a better community. So we did not get here by accident. I've, you know, had the pleasure of being part of that for about three and a half years now. I work at Harvesters, the Community Food Network, our region's food bank, and so I'm well aware of the different challenges that we have in our community. And, you know, but we're not going to get there just as a city alone. It's going to take all of us, and I think that's what I pride myself on, is building those community partnerships, engaging residents. I've had more than two dozen town hall meetings with residents throughout my first term. I'm, you know, first of any council member to do something like that. And so I think really bringing everybody together to solve problems is what I'm all about, and I think what has made our city a great place to live.
Thank you, Logan. We'll move to question number two, and we'll start with you. What do you believe are the greatest challenges the city faces over the next 10 years, and how would you address them?
Absolutely. I think first and foremost, housing affordability. You know, I became a first-time home buyer earlier this year after renting for several years, and the housing market is just crazy and has been for a while. And so we've, the county or United Community Services in partnership with the county and several cities, including Overland Park, put together a Johnson County Housing Study that came out earlier this year and has a great list of recommendations, and I think implementing those recommendations will be a priority of mine and need to be a priority of the city government going forward. I also think our infrastructure. We have, we have a huge backlog of maintenance that needs to be addressed, and so we need to find sustainable solutions to our city's infrastructure, that's, you know, streets, stormwater, and because those bills are coming due. We're a city of 60 years, more than 60 years, and so we have some older infrastructure that needs to be taken, taken care of. And so I think that'll be a big challenge, figuring out, you know, how to budget for that. And then I think we need to start making wiser, stronger decisions when it comes to climate action. In a recent city survey, that was the number three priority of our residents, was to make better decisions at the city level and in partnership with the region and other community organizations to be more realistic about our decision-making related to climate action.
Thank you. Ryan, same question for you.
I think the number one biggest issue is to address the city's dependency on what I'm calling the 0 to 100 response to overdevelopment and tax incentive usage. Number two, the decline in brick-and-border stores with the rise of online commerce and making sure that we're aware of how that's going to affect our tax base. And what I've seen is a decline in the responsiveness and transparency regarding city council decisions. Addressing that, I'd be pushing for limiting tax incentives to truly bided areas and making sure that we're focusing on opportunities for redevelopment. Of course, always 100% of the time, pending feedback of the residents in the surrounding areas. I'm making sure that we're reevaluating our expenditures on a per-department and buy-an-item budget level to make sure that we're building our future budgets based on actual financials, not budgeted financials. And of course, as I've mentioned, voting 100% of the time with the majority of views of my ward when it comes to any sort of council decision.
Great. Thank you. We'll start with question number three, and Ryan, this will be your question. How will you specifically engage with business leaders to make Overland Park prosper?
Sure. I've been in management in the private sector for various industries ever since graduating from grad school, working in administration, marketing, sales, hospitality, finance, HR, housekeeping, engineering, front desk, spell service, you name it, I've done it. I know what it takes to start, run, and develop and grow a business, particularly here in the KC Metro, and I'm always happy, of course, to meet with other business leaders. I think the last time I was in this building was actually for Chase Suite Hotels, which is now even not even a hotel, but we were working with the CVB to bring in a new conference. So I'm always happy to meet with other business leaders, and especially up-and-coming business leaders around it, not with the metro, but of course specifically here in Overland Park, to make sure that they're providing, or they're not they're providing, they're getting all the resources they need to make sure that their business is successful, because in the end, I think what makes Overland Park successful is our residents and is the residents' businesses that they're wanting to start and grow here in their own hometown. So I think that needs to be our priority when it comes to working with businesses, and it makes sense and it sounds great to say, oh, we want, you know, this large international corporate business because they're going to pay the hugest tax rate, they're going to take the biggest building. Well, I'd rather help a small business here in Overland Park before I help Tava Pharmaceuticals move in again. So that's just me.
Thank you. Same question for you, Logan.
Thank you for the question. Engaging with our business community is essential, and that is actually what I do professionally for Harvesters. I'm a community engagement manager with my team focuses on corporations and businesses. So I'm very well-versed on how to engage with businesses of all sizes, small, medium, large, and work with them directly to help meet the needs of our community. And, you know, in Ward 1, we have a lot of great small businesses, and I think when you look at the impact that a small business can have on a community, it really is multiple fold. And so I think continuing to encourage a small business in our community, particularly in our downtown Overland Park area, is essential. Of course, engaging with the Overland Park Chamber of Commerce, the Northeast Chamber of Commerce overlaps with my ward as well. We also have various chambers like the LGBTQ Chamber of Commerce, the Hispanic Chamber. So there's a lot of groups that represent our business community in Overland Park, but I think also speaking directly with business owners and their workers as well is essential. And so I always try to patronize local businesses or stop into offices and chat directly with the people who are, who are running those organizations. So it takes a lot of different approaches, but, you know, people don't come here for the beaches, the mountains. They come here for the schools, and the schools help drive good jobs in our community. So that's what I'm focused on in making sure that our community continues to thrive.
Thank you. We'll go into question number four, and Logan, this will start with you. Overland Park rates highly in campus community assessments, yet competition with other communities for jobs and quality employers is fierce. What tools would you employ as a council member to ensure Overland Park remains competitive in economic development?
Yeah, I think we have a lot of strength. You know, I mentioned our schools, our transportation systems are, you know, above average in many regards, and I think we could do better on transit, but people are attracted to our, how easy it is to get around here. And so we come from a position of strength, certainly in Overland Park, but as competition throughout the nation and throughout the world continues to increase, I think we need to be aware of what businesses are looking for, and certainly not give away the farm, but be willing to make smart business decisions for our taxpayers and for our city and for our residents when it makes sense. When it comes to tax incentives for economic development, I have never voted for an incentive that did not have a financial return on investment for our taxpayers, for our city, and for our residents. So that's, that's sort of a bottom line for me, but there's a lot of room to work with keeping that in mind. You know, I voted for some incentives. I voted against some, particularly if they raise our sales tax, which I think is already too high, but I think there's a lot of room to work with, with different tools that the city can offer, and I think continuing to be open to those to make sure that we stay a competitive place, but certainly understanding the position of strength that we come from.
Thank you. Same question for you, Ryan.
I think there's three big aspects that we, as a city, can use to help with economic development. Obviously, number one is infrastructure, number two, schools, and three, home prices. Those are the biggest things that I think any business is going to be looking at when they want to actually move to a city. Number one, making sure that we have an attractive infrastructure that's going to include making, maintaining good relationships with all of our utility providers, as well as making sure that Overland Park is doing its part to upkeep the streets, sidewalks, and curbs, and make sure that we have a great city and a great-looking city that we can be proud of. Number two, of course, is making sure that we have a good relationship with our school districts, providing K through 12, and of course, then also community college and four-year colleges with Edwards Campus. And I was, I, of course, have made that, and I was the only Overland Park candidate anywhere that has made working with our school system a priority since day one, and making sure that, number three, we're providing an array of housing opportunities. And of course, we've all heard about that and talked about that in a nauseam, but those are the three biggest things I'd be like you can be doing to make sure that we're attracting any good business.
Thank you. We'll move on to question number five, and Ryan, we'll start with you. As you're aware, the current city manager has announced his retirement. What qualities and characteristics do you want to see in the next city manager?
Sure. Two big kind of aspects, and I feel like this is that question you always get asked when you're, when you're applying for a job, and you're like, what do you want to see in your manager when you open up for a job? And it's kind of the same answer I'd give for that as I would for the city, because it's, it's the same person that you want leading something that's both a political and but also, and personal, but also sort of a business as well. So I want somebody that's accessible and that's somebody that truly listens and understands what is being told to him by the residents and the citizens that live here. We need somebody that can work with the city council and make sure that we're addressing those concerns and those needs and not just brushing them off and passing them off to a committee or passing them off to a different department and truly owns that, that owns that position. And then on the other side, making sure they're also somebody that's analytical and that they can really dig into the numbers that are going to be necessary to make sure that we're running an efficient government and going through all those line items and making sure that we're, we're providing the best, the best, what's the word, they're going to bang for their buck when it comes to tax pay. So I think that's what I would look for, and I think that's what a lot of residents would look for, because that's a good balance, I think, between, between the aspects.
Thank you. Same question for you, Logan.
Thank you. It's going to be probably the most important decision that this next council's going to have to make. So I think first and foremost, they need to be a great leader. You know, when you have a employee base of over 1,000 employees, you really need somebody that understands how to manage an organization of that size and breadth, too, with how many different departments and programs that we have with the city. So I think having experience in city management is important. You know, city management is different than a lot of other professions, so I think having some experience there is helpful. I think we need to be sure that we're seeking out diverse applicants, BIPOC candidates, women, and including those perspectives also on the, on the search committee and as we go about the process. So, you know, it's going to be a huge decision. I think what we've had success with over the years are certainly people who have been able to have, run a city on a lean budget, and so certainly somebody with the financial and budgetary acumen to get the job done. But this is going to be an important person. I mean, I think a lot of people don't understand or realize how important a city manager is. It really is the leader of a huge organization that helps provide services for 200,000 residents plus everyone that travels here on a daily basis. So it's going to be a big decision, but, you know, a good leader with experience, who I think is forward-thinking and innovative and has a vision for the future. And then probably just as important as though is somebody who plans to be here for a while, you know, five or more years, I'd say, because what you don't want is instability with, with somebody who's not going to really commit to being here for a while.
Thank you. We'll move on to question six, and Logan, we'll start with you. How will you balance the priorities within your ward with those of the city as a whole?
Well, that's, you can't not do that. I mean, I, there are two council members per ward, and if, if I really want something for Ward 1, I've got to get folks who don't live in Ward 1 to agree with me. So I think having relationships, positive relationships with the rest of the governing body and with the city manager to make sure that we're looking out for challenges that might occur throughout the city. We are one city. We certainly represent our ward, but we have to work together to, to work on challenges throughout the entire city. And obviously, different wards have different challenges, and so I think understanding the different challenges that other wards have is important. In northern Overland Park, obviously, we have older infrastructure, older housing, that sort of thing, and so that's a little bit different challenge than maybe out south. So communication is key, but also understanding that, you know, I think Ward 1 is my favorite ward, obviously, but, you know, Ward 1 really does come from a position of strength. When you look at downtown and the, the housing stock that we have, we really are a financial engine for the rest of the city. College and Metcalf, obviously, is huge, but when you look at a per-square acre, northern Overland Park Ward 1 is really a financial engine of our city, and so, you know, advocating for solutions to our challenges is, is just as important as any part of, other part of the city.
Thank you. Same question for you, Ryan.
Can you actually repeat the question?
I absolutely can. How will you balance the priorities within your ward with those of the city as a whole?
Sure. So as I've said continuously, every vote for me means that I've already talked to as many residents I physically can when it comes to any sort of vote that happens at the city council level, and that's for any citywide initiative. If you're talking about a ward-specific issue, my allegiance is going to be obviously to the ward over the city, and if it's a different ward in the city, I'm going to be relying on those city council members to make sure that they're talking to their residents and that if I'm voting for or against something, it's because those residents in that ward want that, as opposed to it being that specific council member that's wanting a personal favor or something that is their pet project. I want to make sure it's actually going to be benefiting the people of that ward, because I don't necessarily know everything that's going on in an entire largest, second-largest city in, in the state of Kansas, so I'm going to need to be relying on the honesty and efficiency of the, the other city council people. As was mentioned, you know, obviously, the biggest thing is the needs of the city outweighing the needs of the ward, but in our ward, as was mentioned by Logan, city infrastructure is obviously the biggest issue just because of the age and the situation. A prime example is the, the section of Corvira that just got redone that spent two years on it. They still left it one-way and then each-way, and we have chip seal in, chips in Ward 1. So that has pissed off, I don't know how many people that I've talked to, because they see that sort of new construction happening, and they're like, why are we still dealing with this crap up in Ward 1? So I want to make sure that we're, we're using the resources and be empowered to help everybody in the city and not just where the money is out south.
Thank you. We'll go to question seven, and we'll start with you, Ryan. According to the Johnson County Community Housing Study, Overland Park needs approximately 4,600 owner-occupied housing units at or below $250,000 and approximately 2,700 rental units with monthly rent at or below $1,000 to satisfy attainable housing needs by 2030. What is your reaction to this finding, and what specific proposals would you bring to the table to support attainable housing goals?
So this is what the entire election cycle is about, apparently, is affordable housing. You know, and as I mentioned in the last forum, you know, we have, what, hundreds of apartment units within the Affordable Housing Unit. We have hundreds of houses right now, single-family homes, three-bed and two-bath-in-houses that are within what we're calling affordable. Now, do I think we need more that are going to be under the average income of somebody in the city of Overland Park? Sure, of course I do. And I, and I'd like to look at options for that. I think, you know, having been in the extended-stay hotel business for years, I, you know, again, I worked at that one right down the street here, and I always thought it would keep being in the rooms whenever I was doing a room check or tours. I was like, this would make a great little, like, cheap apartment if you ever needed to. So I think that's a, that's an excellent alternative, just because I know, obviously, with COVID, travel is going to be cut back a lot, and so those hotels are going to be hurting, and that's a great usage for that. But again, it's things like that that need to be receiving these tax incentives, and these are the things that need to be receiving those incentives for redevelopment, because these are the things that are actually going to be helping people that actually need it. Using things like cottage housing and small and tiny home communities and things like that, that's great. I'd really like to see you try and get some of those things passed by the HOAs out in southern Overland Park. That sure is not going to fly, but if you can get it, that'd be great. Again, my biggest issue with the city, current city council, is that none of what they're doing or voting for is actually helping any of this. Every single incentive and every single development that we're pushing, especially in downtown Overland Park and out south, where you have miles of, literally miles of apartment complexes, and everything is luxury. Senior home, senior homes and senior developments are being built, you know, luxury. Every single house that's being built is luxury. So let's stop it with the luxury, because, but they don't need help. They don't need the assistance. The people that need assistance are the people that are converting hotels into cheap apartments for the people that actually need it.
Thank you. Same question for you, Logan.
Well, housing is a supply-and-demand equation, and I mean, as the housing study you mentioned indicates, we are, we have too much demand and not enough supply. And so I have been, been proud to support some projects already in my first term that have put more units where there were fewer of housing, and I think continuing to work on and implementing those recommendations that came from the Johnson County Housing Study earlier this year is going to be essential. A big part of that is making it easier for folks to build townhomes, condos, some of those smaller products that people can own and start accruing wealth, and then obviously additional rental units that are at a price point that people can afford, who are working in our fire stations and police stations and at our schools. afford, who are working in our fire stations and police stations and at our schools. So there's a lot more that we can do. You know, I've, I've been able to include some housing affordability stipulations in development agreements. We're working with Blue Hawk on them helping with our Port OP efforts for housing affordability. But we certainly, that is a tool that can be used to, to help make those units more affordable. But also, it goes back to supply and demand. And when you are thousands of units short, everything's going to be at a luxury price that's built in. And so I think figuring out how we can make it more financially viable for folks to build the amount of housing units that we need in our city is going to be our best course of action. We're going to be starting next year to update our comprehensive plan, and I think that's going to go a long ways towards reducing some of those barriers to make it easier for folks to build some of those housing choices that we're going to need to make sure that we have an affordable place for everybody who works in Oakland Park to live here.
Thank you. We'll go to question eight, and Logan, we'll start with you. What elements of Vision Metcalf and Forward OP do you believe are the most important for the future of Oakland Park?
So Forward, Forward OP, the, the main points there is that we want to be a forward-thinking, innovative, and welcoming community, and I think that's a great vision to have. Housing affordability is a part of, of Forward OP. A lot of it is really a community plan, not things that the city alone can, can tackle, but relating to mental health, healthcare, education, workforce development. So there's a lot of elements in there where it really is going to take community partnerships. And we have Forward OP started as a nonprofit organization now. And I think figuring out how to resource that organization to help us identify and advocate for solutions related to Forward OP. And then Vision Metcalf, you know, we're slowly but surely working on it. It's, it's been a while. That came out when I was in middle school, I think, or high school. But I think what's exciting recently is the College of Metcalf Walkability Study to make it more pedestrian-friendly. And I think in downtown Oakland Park, you know, you walk into Strang Hall, you go to Thompson Park, you see how vibrant it is in downtown Oakland Park. That's not what it was when I was growing up. And so I'm really glad to see our downtown be, be more vibrant each and every day. And so I think continuing to implement Vision Metcalf and Forward OP are, are essential. And a lot of that's also going to be part of our comprehensive plan update next year as well.
Thank you. Ryan, same question for you.
Sure. Obviously, with, first of all, Vision Metcalf, it was a great purpose in it, and that's our central corridor, and it obviously needs to shine, and the investment in it was a good idea. My issue and the issue I hear a lot of people, especially in Ward One, is that, one, there's too many zoning and, and code exemptions were given for the downtown Oakland Park area, and form code wasn't followed, and then it ends up looking like it doesn't blend in with the rest of the surrounding area at all. Again, it was something I mentioned earlier, that zero-to-100 redevelopment plan. Downtown Oakland Park needed to be re-invested in, it needed to be redeveloped and updated, but it didn't need to be five to six stories. It needed to be nicer and newer and, and something that could look nice to attract businesses to come in. A lot of time and money's been spent on the southern areas of the Vision, oh, sorry, yeah, Vision Metcalf plan. I'd like to make sure that we're focusing on SubArea One, which is the area north of Shining Parkway, and making sure that we're, even the area between that and 75th Street. There's so many just old and dilapidated businesses along, actually, Metcalf, that need to be redeveloped and reused for better purposes. And I'm hoping we can get some integrative building in there instead of more high-rise mixed-use development along Metcalf itself. Forward OP, it sounds like a great idea. Everything I read about it makes it sound like it's a warm, fuzzy idea, and I hope that it turns out the way it does. I haven't seen probably more than two or three of the items on that entire 88-page thing that have actually been done, so I hope that's going to be happening in the next 17 years. But I'm looking forward to that as well. I think, as Logan said, it is going to take a lot of community development as well and not necessarily just the city. So it'll be interesting to see where that builds as well.
Thank you. We'll go to question nine, and Ryan, we'll start with you. Since its founding in 1960, Oakland Park leaders have had a long history of visionary planning. What do you believe the city should do today to ensure the city's prosperity for the next 60 years?
Sure. Number, I think there's two big things we could be doing going forward to making sure that we're looking ahead. And one of them isn't necessarily something you think that we need to be doing to look ahead, but as I've said time and time again, it's, number one is listening to the residents. And as far as looking ahead, we need to be looking at the residents who have been here. We're saying, you know, for the next 60 years. Well, why aren't, we need to be talking to a lot more of the residents that have been here for the past 60 years, because they're the people that helped to actually create the city that we're living in today. And so if we want to continue to be a successful community, I would actually talk to the people that made it a successful community, because obviously, what's something that they did and they created and they've been building for the past 60 years is something good. And so we need to be talking to those people a lot more often. And that's not what I'm hearing or listening to as a city government now. Number two is making sure, as I kind of mentioned before, is to be looking at our revenue streams when it comes to the brick-and-mortar stores, because obviously, as we all know, we all have an Amazon Prime account, and that's where we get all of our stuff. We don't actually go to a store anymore. So if our city taxes, our sales tax is, is, is making up whatever percentage that we want it to be, we need to be looking at making sure that we're diversifying that tax base and, and planning for a future where we don't have as much sales tax coming in, because that's probably where it's going to be heading.
Thank you. Same question for you, Logan.
Yeah, we, we've been around for over 60 years now as a city, and, you know, I, I think, as mentioned earlier, some of those bills are, are come and due. So we've got needs right now that we need to address, but I think it's essential that we look at our next 60 years. And Forward OP, I believe, is a 20-year plan, and our infrastructure advisory group is looking at sort of what we need to do over the next 10 years. But we, we need to be as much talking with folks who have been here for the past 60 years as people who are going to be here in 60 years. You know, when I joined the council, I think I was the only person under the age of, I, I don't know, 40, maybe? And millennials make up the, the largest segment of our population when you look generationally. So I think making sure that we're listening to, to everybody in our community, which is certainly a priority of mine, and making sure that we're making plans. Housing affordability is going to be key to our, our, the future of our city. Sustainable infrastructure that we've talked about is going to be key. I think transit is one of those areas where, you know, if we want to reduce sprawl and allow people to have living affordability, affordable living in our community, transit is going to be one of those ways that, that we can help achieve that. But, you know, I think it's, our, our father's solutions and our grandfather's solutions are not going to be our solutions necessarily. 2021 is a lot different than 1960, and I think we need to be looking not at the 1950s, but at the 2050s. That's my vision, forward-thinking, innovative, welcoming, just like Forward OP, looking ahead as much as, as we're looking at the successes of our past.
Thank you. We'll go to question 10, and Logan, we'll start with you. Do you believe the Oakland Park City Council is responsive to the needs of the community? Why and why not?
You know, I, I think this is certainly an area where we, we should see continued improvement. Certainly, when I first got on the, the city council, I, I would say some of our community engagement techniques were more reminiscent of the 1990s than the 2020s, but we've made improvements on that. I was the council member, along with a couple others, who helped me, who got us to finally start live streaming and recording all of our city council meetings. We have initiated open public comment that I was instrumental in helping to develop. I personally and with my wardmate have hosted more than two dozen town hall meetings. Council members before me did not do town hall meetings. I have been active on social media, engaging with, with residents there. That is also something that council members did not do before I got on the council. So, you know, I, I think continuing to look at ways where we can engage the community is important. I think our budget process is certainly an area where we can look at improved community engagement. You know, I see other cities who sort of gamify the budget experience, so you can, you know, you have the finite amount, you can kind of pick and choose what services you want to fund, and I think you realize pretty quickly that it's hard to fund everything adequately on our tax revenue. So I think there's different ways, especially digitally, that, that we can help engage residents, while keeping in mind that not everybody has easy access to the internet, and we still need to have in-person methods of, of engaging. But as somebody who does community engagement professionally for a living, that is an area that I am very interested in continuing to make improvements. I think I've done that my first four years. I'm always available to residents and constituents who reach out to me, but I think we, we still have some room to grow there.
Thank you. Same question for you, Ryan.
Sure. The council being responsive to the needs of the city. I think it's great that the open forum part of the city council meetings was, was enacted, and having the live streaming is great. I'm sorry. I also make sure that we're not deleting any sort of recordings after a year, which is the current city council policy. A lot of things in city council take more than a year to actually come to fruition, and it'd be nice to have those things on record for longer than a year to be able to reference. But I would reference, again, the, the Oakland Park City survey. The largest decreases over the past three years have been, number one, maintenance of city streets, shocker, crime prevention, shocker, and number three, overall city planning and development, responsiveness of city government, city keeping uniformed issues in city, a level of public engagement and decision-making. Those were all the lowest satisfaction numbers over the past three years, down at least eight, nine, 10%. So being open to people talking to you at the city council meetings is very different than actually reacting and doing something about what you're hearing. I've said it before, there's no point in having an open mic at the city council meetings if there are no way that we're going to do anything about it. Then you might as well not even have the microphone there to begin with. So I'd like to make sure that not only are we listening to the needs of the city and the residents, but we're actually reacting and doing something about it at the same time, because that's what I'm hearing a lot at door-to-door, and that's also what the city survey is reporting, bringing back as well.
Thank you. We're going to go to our two-minute closing statements, and Ryan, we will start with you.
Thank you. Again, of course, thank you for the chamber for hosting us. It's been great to be here. And again, bring up the city survey. You know, we're, we're all happy to live in Oakland Park, that's for sure, and I would obviously agree with that. That's why I'm still here and raising a family here. But this city is the way it is, and again, as I said, in large part due to the residents that make this a great place to live, work, and play. That said, the biggest issues and top priorities that the residents are wanting addressed are the very things that I've been talking about since day one. They want their city's curbs and sidewalks fixed so they can be proud of their neighborhoods. They want their codes enforced so they, their communities can be maintained. They want to know that they're going to be safe 24/7 with a good response time from our first responders. And they want the best education possible for their kids. They want businesses they can use and relate to and jobs that can support the community and truly fulfill a need that's there. They want a government that doesn't just listen, but reacts to what you say, both when it comes to the developing, you're in your own backyard, and the issues of the day. I'd love to be able to be not only a politician, but your public servant who can help with this and move Oakland Park thoughtfully and respectfully forward while appreciating and saving our past. I look forward to your vote, remember, respect. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Two minutes for you, Logan.
Yep. Thank you very much to the chamber for hosting this opportunity for voters to educate themselves about the election coming up. Three generations of my family live here in Oakland Park in Ward One, and this is a community that I love dearly. And I, I think it is that passion for this place that has really driven my desire to serve this community. We have a lot of challenges that our community will be facing, and we need folks who are going to look at these solutions reasonably, in a fiscally responsible manner, not make politics out of decision-making, and make sure that we are engaging our community in a thoughtful way. It's not helpful when we present things in an inaccurate way. And I think the derisiveness I see in, in DC and in Topeka is not what we want in Oakland Park. That's not what has led us to a successful community here in 2021, and it's not going to be the recipe for success going forward. So I am somebody who thinks carefully about each decision that is before me. I engage with my colleagues, I engage with our city's professional staff, I engage with my constituents and the folks who, who work in our community. But we, we need to continue, I think, the level of true leadership that I think we've had in the city, and we also need to think regionally. We are the second-largest city in the metro, we're the second-largest city in the state of Kansas, and so decisions we make impact the rest of the region. And I think having that leadership for our own city and our own residents, but also for our own region, will help us all be a thriving community.
Thank you, Logan. I'd like to thank everyone for attending and watching online. I'd especially like to thank our candidates for participating in today's forum. We appreciate your time and your willingness to serve the community. A recording of this event will be posted on our voter education site at votejoke.com. And finally, we encourage everyone to learn about the candidates and vote. Advanced voting in person begins Saturday, October 23rd, and polls will be open 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM on Election Day, Tuesday, November 2nd. Thank you for joining us, and have a great afternoon.